That's somewhere.
Hi, Mom. I my last.
This is.
It's fun, remember?
Morocco.
Okay.
Yeah, I've always been.
I went to. Was it not that involved back?
Not that cool or?
It's a sound like says a cool trip and we made our basement.
Yeah.
Met.
Good. I missed the. I was in adoption. I ended up for my nights.
I have a friend. I have that, but I have a friend who's retired to. I mean. So you can see. You really can. I found just Sarah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I do.
So.
I think they came. It was great. That particular night, Monday night, I'm building a 12th.
Making sure this.
Job has taken me to very unique places.
It's something to.
Did you go through my solid? Out of the community.
America's. Now, it has a certain limited.
Rest of.
Can you get them all?
I don't want to be.
That's.
Are these shoes?
For commercial.
Yeah, that was. It was seven days.
Yes, we're great. I'm not. I have no. I'm not. Their market was much more.
Yeah. It led to.
I think it's much. Rather do it in Kesh where they're just there.
Sitting, but I'm not.
This is.
I would have.
Everybody else.
Yes.
The market is wonderful.
I was my mom. Well, time to construct.
I turned on the video. I said. Which is like. Fifteen hundred dollars.
A lot.
We do a lot with.
February tenth and eleventh.
I have a good friend who's.
My thing is.
Operating. They have the call. They are. I think anybody can walk in, so. If they have my. She can't wander. Well, she can't. I mean, it's a public show. Anybody can. But if you can't, they can walk. During the day at Javits, everything is open. If that matters, this is during the evening. It's much more closed, but I can connect her to the press office. I mean, I know for she can walk through Javits and there's tons of contact there because all the competition happens during the day. That's it's just the evening section. From like. Sixty or something. Two nights. Well, and we are. Okay, so. Yeah.
Let me see.
I'm not. But you have my.
Maybe he's.
And what does it mean? Do you guys? Now, I get it. I get it. Nothing is satisfying. Very.
I'm glad.
Very selectively transparent.
That's the best. Somebody else came.
There was a little bit.
No, that's.
I think. I still.
Yeah. You told me.
Far more than you could. Yeah, I'll just be interested to see what happens.
I worked twelve minutes this morning.
You know, I think that's what.
To get to where I was going.
Has their.
I mean, they.
This is like.
Q. I'm sorry. I don't think.
I don't think it made it.
So folks, good evening on this most brick of brick days. I bring. Those who know, they know. Those who don't get it. So this public hearing is called to order on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty-eight P M. At C B fourteen's district office at eight ten, East Sixteenth Street in Brooklyn. And so the purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony with respect to an application submitted by Tadara Rhodes. Doing business as Bud Bodega for an adult use retail dispensary license at eight fifteen Flatbush Avenue. And so for folks who may want to know where that is, that's on Flatbush between Kate. That's where that is. And so the Community Board fourteen District Office, we received notification on December second, two thousand twenty-four. And the state of New York allows thirty days should the board wish to express an opinion to the Cannabis Control Ward. And for this application, C B fourteen requested and received a thirty day extension to hear the matter this evening. So if members of the public wish to testify on this issue, please register for time by signing up at the back table with Patricia. Please state clearly for the record your name and whether you are a resident of C B fourteen or are representing an organization. So the first speaker should be Tadara Rhodes, representing Bud Bodega. And so is Tadara Rhodes here?
No.
Okay. I do not see Tadara Rhodes. Okay. And so who do we have any members of the public who would register to speak?
We had no pre-registered members of the public.
Okay. Got it. And so then moving on then to board members, as you can see, we do not have the applicant here. And also we do not have any pre-registered members here to speak. Do board members have any questions regarding either the application or the location or something else related to this item? Bart, I think.
Sure. What can you tell us?
Bud Bodega has come before this board, I think, twice before.
Yes.
Twice before. They were never opposed as an applicant. One of their locations was approved but never moved forward. Another location was not approved because that was the one over in proximity to the school on Pointe and Avenue. But they have not been denied as an applicant. The location was actually also previously approved by this board under the. Sorry, I'm going to restate that. I'm going to clarify that. There was a previous applicant for this space who also failed to appear. And so the board was going, the board made a motion to deny that application on the basis of the lack of information. But then board member Denise at that meeting, it was a hearing held right in advance of a of a board meeting. Made a comment about the fact that we had tried to split this before from applicant to location. And so our letter to O C M went out to say, the board. The board recommends disapproval of the application on the basis of lack of information about the applicant. But offers no opposition as to the location. So that's what we're on record with with the Office of Cannabis Management in the state of New York.
So that's weird. So we actually have sort of approved this applicant before and they give the location for.
Yeah.
And yet they're not here. It sounded like.
So.
They could have had an easy time had they.
My question was more so in relation because there's already two dispensaries, one on the search. Between Flatbush and Bedford, and then there's another on Flatbush and.
With the.
But just wanted to know, like, what was?
The, the, the state of New York has a rule by which licensed licensed dispensary cannot be within. Five hundred feet of a school, two hundred feet of a. Sorry, is it the other way around?
No, I think it's five hundred feet of the school or places of worship.
And a house of worship. Or one thousand, a one thousand foot radius. From another licensed cannabis dispensary. I think the two you mentioned are.
They are licensed. And that.
One on Beverly.
The one on Beverly is definitely a thousand feet, way past a thousand feet, but the one on Georgia maybe. That one is like two blocks, two or three blocks away.
So that is a question where if the applicant were here, we would ask them, had they measured the distance between the proposed location of eight fifteen Flatbush and that location on Georgia.
Is it a thing where they just come and wait or they're just?
Question that we heard from the applicant or.
Patricia, did the applicant respond to the, we haven't heard from them at all since receiving the application?
And did the application come from the applicant or from an attorney or representative?
No, it came.
No.
It was delivered.
But the applicant, I don't know.
Applicant rep.
Yes.
Well, that means the board has a decision to make on whether or not you're, you know, what we want to stay, say to their.
Well, when we made that determination as to the location, were we aware or was it, did it predate the location? You were mentioning whether or not it was, you know, within the thousand foot radius, like? Just to try to factor that into.
Think it would have predated those.
It would have predated it? Okay. So then we don't know. So I guess we have no information about the locations.
What, what, what could be said is if, you know, that previously this board had no objection to the location. However, since that time, there are other licensed dispensaries that might be within one thousand feet. You know, we, we please assure that you will. Ascribe that measurement before approving this if it moves forward or something like that. Worded better. Can we Google map the distance? Does, does O C M have a, don't they have something on their website that shows you where their licensed ones are? Can you look that up?
Oh, on screen?
Sure, if you can get it. Because I didn't.
Was saying eight fifteen Flatbush.
Yes, that's.
It's kitty corner from Kate and Flats. It's the corner of Kate and it's a brand new building.
Well. Black was.
And it's not the other address.
What's, what's the other one? Because you said one is legal, one is not.
That's what Patricia's looking up now.
Can I just ask, whose job is it? Whose role is it to be doing this work to look things up, like the distances between the applicant? Applications, the current dispensaries? Is that the union board's?
No.
Job?
No, the application shouldn't be moving forward unless they've been sort of checked off by the by O C M. But in our experience, that hasn't been the case.
Yeah.
Okay. So. O C M should be the ones.
Sort of like if we were going by state liquor authority. You know, they, even if we, even if we approved one, S L A would deny it because it didn't fall into their rules. Whereas O C M, I'm not getting that same sense of institutional organization.
It's probably not working well.
Eighteen twenty-five.
True, but Brooklyn belongs to be there on.
But why, why do you say definitely licensed though, Chris? Do they have, do they have it showing in the window or something like that? Okay. So then. On the basis of this application and the, and the applicant not being here, does the, does this group want to make a recommendation to the board about any? Approve, recommendation to approve or disapprove the applicant?
Say on the basis of not.
Yeah, I got.
Having a face to the name, being personable and saying, hey, we want to come to your neighborhood and. Would like to get a full move to be here.
And then on the basis of location, while we haven't objected to this location before, in the meantime, two dispensaries have opened. They may be within a thousand feet. We want to alert O C M to be vigilant about that rule should for, should additional applications come forward.
I second the.
Something like that.
Sounds sort of sounds about right.
So is that, is that born?
Those are bizarre.
It has the thousand foot range, so maybe if you put the address in.
Oh, that's worship.
If there's a place there on Linden and Flatbush, is that not five hundred?
Well, so the thing about houses of worship and, and, and I don't, then these cannot all be this. Houses of worship have to be freestanding buildings and their only use is for house of worship. So the storefront H M Ws don't really count in the rule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Guess what? Everybody worship.
Okay, I think I have, I think I have the. The language that I can give to this chair so that when the recommendation is read to the full board on Monday, you'll have something. Either ratifiable or. Worthy of debate.
Yeah, just to.
Repeat what it.
You want me to say?
Yes.
On the basis of the applicant not being present at the public hearing, the recommendation will be to deny. And on the basis of the location, while the board has approved this location before, there are two retail dispensaries. In proximity to this location. And we want to make be sure that O C M is vigilant about the one thousand foot rule should another application move forward at this spot. At this address.
Shall I make that mention? Technically, I guess not. What she said.
Then that. That'll be whipped into shape for Mondays. No, not this Monday. Yeah. I'm sorry.
I'm a little.
Played that too. They followed one's face, so.
Well, it does. We thought today was Tuesday.
That what my.
That was, yeah, just won't go away. Logic was right, but this is that the application was incorrect.
Days of the week are hard.
This is.
They are.
We're here to check each other.
And it is now six fifty, so you are welcome to move directly.
Well, and so folks, so thank you so much for your help. So that concludes this public hearing regarding the Bud Bodega application for eight fifteen Flatbush Avenue at six fifty P M. So that one is adjourned. And so now we move to. Eat next. So give me a second. So we'll read the script again. And so this public hearing is called to order at six fifty P M. On January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at the Community Board fourteen District Office. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony with respect to a variance application to the Board Standards and Appeals. Calendar number one, one, five, dash nine, four, dash B Z, two, four, seven, zero, Bedford Avenue. The interior lot between Clarendon and Portelli Roads, block five, one, six, seven, lot forty. The application has been made pursuant to. See our section eleven dash four, one, one, for the extension of term of a variance for the continued use of an automated repair. Which expired on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. An amendment of the conditions of the previous resolution. An extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy and a waiver of. And so before I go any further, can the board members please introduce themselves? And I apologize because it's the last one, so I'll start with myself. I am Carl Henry Caesar and I'm the chairperson.
Of course, I'll bond. Annala Parker. Deborah Valentine, board member.
Christopher Bronson, board member.
Nina Sapier. Dawn Walker.
Greg Alvarez.
Barton Presalt, board member.
Sean Campbell, district manager. Not a boardman.
True. That's true. That's true. And so if members of the public do wish to testify on this issue, you must register for time. So please sign up at the back table with Patricia if you haven't already. And please state clearly for the record your name and whether you are a resident of C B fourteen or are representing an organization. And so the first speaker will be the applicant. And so is the applicant here? Hello.
Should I just say? Everybody like.
Yes.
No problem. Everybody can hear me from.
Yep.
Yes.
She also besides, I think that you should open the plans if that is.
Yeah.
There. And then if you want to give, if anybody wants to look at a hard copy, I brought.
Okay.
So it's the same. But probably amongst yourselves actually see the hard copies. And sometimes people enjoy paper, so it's a little bit of. Unlike you have to look it before me. We want to stay in this neighborhood, but I'm with you. So that is the worst thing. So I guess I'll give you a little bit of history about this case. This was first and runs with it since nineteen twenty-four. It was slightly a different case, and then in nineteen forty-six became automotive sales. In the nineties, it split up into multiple automotive repairs as it is today, it's multiple automotive repairs. Last time we were before this board, there was a huge issue with parking on the sidewalk. Remembers that? And, and they only got a year and six months to go back to the Board of Standards and Appeals. Usually get ten years. They got a year and six months. So it kind of takes a lot to get your act together. So I just, please let me allow to say sorry. It takes a lot to get your act together to hire an attorney, an architect, an expediter, whatever, all these different things. And you pay a waiver fee. He's paying a bunch of money. So it did expire in twenty twenty-two, and I know it is twenty twenty-five. He hired us in twenty twenty-four, not realizing how quickly the time went because you have to hire all these different people. And then City of Yes came out, which changed use groups. It changed all the sections of the zoning. It changed everything. So it took us a little bit to get our act together. As you know, that was a huge change. I'm sure you guys both know it. So apologies for being two years late, but we are paying for that. So that is why we have a waiver, and that is the beat of the waiver. So that's a waiver. We are looking to get ten years, and this owner knows that the tenants have been bad about parking. But he's been diligent every like week or two. He goes, he checks the sidewalk. He makes sure that no one's parking on it. And I know that next door, there's a residence and people park on the sidewalk. And I know that the other side, there's also an automotive repair that people park on the sidewalk. But our sidewalk, the employees come in and they put bollards on the sidewalk and they tell people you cannot park on the sidewalk. Unfortunately, we cannot control our neighbors, but this owner has been really, really diligent about not putting people on the sidewalk. He took down all the signage because that was another complaint, but that was signage. And he's just looking to stay in the neighborhood and provide automotive repair. And I'm sure a lot of you have seen, we represent a lot of gas stations. And a lot of people are just converting to residential. And he wants to stay in automotive repair in New York City, which I think is something that's kind of special. Because where do you go to fix your car if you have one? And I know a lot of people have cars in Midwood and Flatbush. So I guess I just wanted to kind of explain, and then I can go through the plans aside, but they, they haven't changed. So if you want to go to the next. Or, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's what.
There's a one story building in the nineties that was separated, so there could be multiple automotive repairs. We don't want to change anything. Single story, they took down all the signage. Yeah, this is just what it looks like from a location perspective. I'd like to hear what everybody's feeling and if you've seen any progress, I hope you have because owners have really been trying for.
Okay, so first up, so thank you very much for presenting and remind us your name again.
Elise on Premier Plaza.
Elise, thank you very much for coming. And so first up, if we have any pre-registered speakers or members from the public who'd like to. Speak, we can hear them first. And so. Got you. So yes, we do have someone. I apologize in case I mispronounce her name. Do I pronounce her name? Samara Gaia?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and sorry, it just felt uncomfortable to not look at you while you're introducing yourselves to be behind you. Here, but I wanted to make sure I was making eye contact as you were speaking. So I live right across the street. I've lived there since two thousand and nineteen. I have a one-year-old and a four-year-old, two daughters. I, I and my neighbors, unfortunately, many of my neighbors whom I'm in close contact with were unable to attend tonight due to different. Reasons, but we are all in communication with each other, and I've had a lot of trouble with this. These folks across the street for a lot of reasons. It is a source of incredible stress. I'll say for multiple reasons. One, toxins. It's very intense. This is very intense. There's a lot of welding, there's automotive repair with involves painting, et cetera, et cetera. And we all have homes across the street and at the side. So there's intense fumes. A, B, incredible noise. C, and I'd say the most disturbing couple are. The actual relational dynamics have been very, very challenging. And aggressive. And I would say even. On the border of traumatic, like I have been. My husband and I both. Have been like with my infant daughter, just making a U-turn in the driveway in order to come around across the street to be able to. Bring in our sleeping babies and like scream that, curse that. It's been. Very intense to have. Neighbors who are also parking all up and down both. Sides of the sidewalk. They don't, I'm not sure what the relationship is with the alternate street parking or not. It feels like there's some agreement or something, as long as you open your hood, you don't get a ticket. So all of the cars that don't get. That are in the middle of being worked on or aren't running are just, let's live, just live on the block up and down both sides. And they don't move. And come street parking time, the hoods just go up. If there's a hood, it means don't ticket me. And yeah, so it's been, it's been an intense relationship and I'm, I'm definitely not alone in speaking it. And yeah, I'll, I'll pause there.
Clarification.
So thank you very much for speaking and then District Manager Campbell and then I see. Bronson. Yeah, so.
I just, I just want to clarify, there's no rule that if you put a hood up, you're not, you're not subject to enforcement. And they're actually not supposed to be using the street, the public right of way as their workspace. Sanitation has, has enforced, P D has enforced. I'm not saying they do it all the time, but it's, but it's been an issue for, for the agencies as well in order to get the enforcement. So I just wanted to for the record state that that's just so that everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So y'all don't go home and put the hoods up.
Thank you for that. And so I have board member Bronson that's up here and then Valentine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Being here. How long have you lived in your?
Since two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay. Board member sub gear and. Good, okay, um, board member Subgear, and then Mel.
Um, I just Googled a picture, and. Right in the picture, you can see cars, they're not necessarily, well, one of them is on the sidewalk, there's a truck there. But there are vehicles, one with its hood up, in the bike lane, okay? I bicycle this route regularly in order to get back and forth to work, and I am literally in terror when I reach that stretch. It's really stressful, yeah. It is very, yes, it is very stressful, I am forced into traffic. You know, at night during rush hour, and right now it's still dark, and even though I have lights galore, um. Vehicles that are also, that are also now used, you know, in the, you know, traffic lane, are not necessarily very. Graceful about giving space to bicycle riders who have to go somewhere, we can't levitate over the darn, you know, vehicles in the bike lane. I am totally fed up with the situation, find a lot around a corner or somewhere else, which many other garages do. So that they can get the vehicles off the street until the, um, owner shows up to pick up their vehicle.
Okay, so I have board member Valentin, then you guys on Alfonso, right, and then I'll do Barden, and then.
Okay, my question is, when you, before you moved there, did you not notice that that particular business was there? Oh, I noticed. So how long this business been in?
Like nineteen twenty four, and then in the nineties, it became the multiple businesses, and I just, may I add one statement? I don't know how the other businesses got there, this business is subject to the B S A, but right next door, there's also automotive repair that's not subject to the automotive repair. And my client has really, really struggled with, like, we're responsible for the whole block, but we're not, the business is the whole block, so. Figuring out how to keep a business that has been there for decades and also do that, it's been like a very difficult struggle. For the ownership who just wants to keep these tenants who've been around forever, so. I'm, I'm open to you send your suggestions, I talk to him all the time, and I go back and give him different ideas, so we can like all live together, and you can keep saying your comments, I'm just saying that, that's kind of like.
Really, that was my, my take, is like. Before you bought or before you moved in, that property, that business was there. Mm-hmm. And personally, I don't think it's fair for somebody that's been doing a business for so many years, and then here come you, and then you're blaming them. Right, the fault is going on them, the fault is going on them. Mm-hmm. When it's not, probably not their, their cars that's being out in the street. So have you spoken to the other people too, or you are focusing on this one?
Have they spoken to the different tenants in the lot?
May I actually, may I actually try to address that, because the three, there are three businesses, and none of them are adhering to, to, to. The rules, um, but this business often has said it's not them, they keep their sidewalk cleared, it's the other ones, but P D has been out, and they have been able to substantiate that it is indeed this business. That's, that's engaging in the same behaviors, and while a business can be in a place for a long time, it still has to adhere to the, to the rules.
But the thing I drive by there, I drive by.
You wanted, I just didn't want to say that, and this business is not.
Really trying to manage it, so I, I'm going to, that's not true, that's not true, but he, he keeps sending me photos, I ask for constant photos, he shows me the ball, I mean, those are. Those, those bollards, they couldn't have those bollards either. Well, that was part of the agreement with the B S, the B S A said, oh, like, because they were trying to resolve this from last time, that was part of the agreement, that employees would come out. Bollards and tell people they cannot park on the every morning, so. I, if that's not what you want, then please note it, I just, that there was, they tried to come to an agreement, and I wasn't here, but they have in twenty twenty two to try to resolve. This issue. I hope I'm helping answer questions and not.
Definitely, and so next up, we have board member Alfonso, then Barden, and then Parker.
Um, so I actually live on this block as well, I live down the block, so I know that this business has existed. For as long as I lived there before I even lived there, it's been almost thirty years, probably even thirty years more than that. Um, and I actually, this specific tenant, I actually did know them. Um, and I spent a lot of time there over the summer, so I was able to observe. That I didn't see a lot of parked, um, cars on the sidewalk, and I can tell you that from my personal experience, and I'm along the same lines with that, because the. Business was there for so long, it's like, did you do the research before you moved there to know that there is an auto mechanic place right across from the, from your home, and if there is, you would. It would behoove you to expect, um, this type of work to happen there. Mm-hmm. And then another problem that we have is that the building that's on the corner used to be another auto mechanic place, it used to be a tire place. And it closed, and up goes a six, seven-story building, people have cars, we have all the things, so. You've now added people onto a place where people weren't occupied. In addition to the buildings that are going up on Rogers, they are closing all of the auto mechanic places that were there as well. Rogers is also a one-way street and with a bus lane, and causes an immense amount of traffic. The closest place to get your car fixed is on Avenue D and. Close to King's Highway, which is very far. If you have a flat tire, if you have all the things, you have to go very far to get your car fixed, and as somebody who had a car problem over the summer as well, this was a very convenient place. So I say all of that to say, I understand that the, you're having issues, but. I'm also hearing, and I'll also observe that this one business is getting the brunt of the, the, the punches for all of the other businesses in there. So has it been, has there been an attempt to amicably? Have a conversation with everyone and say, hey?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because I feel like, obviously, you're, you're, obviously, if something's happening to you, or something's affecting you, it may not be. You may not be in the best headspace or the best attitude to go about it, especially if it's, if it's happening constantly, but like. What attempt has there been to speak to the business owners to say like, hey, what agreement can we come to? So that we can live together amicably and not have this problem all the time?
One hundred percent, happy to respond to that as well.
So, go ahead.
Okay, um, I want to, just because, um. I'm perceptive to the things that are spoken, as well as the things that are unspoken, I've lived in the neighborhood twenty-five years, we're a black family. Um. And I have two daughters who are literally, on a regular basis, witnessing. Screaming and cursing, uh, whether or not it has to do with us or our neighbors, even amongst the folks across the street. Um. The, I don't know which, which owner you're working with of the, of the.
I know, I represent the tenant, I represent the owner.
The building, so I don't know which tenant you're working with, and I'm not sure who.
I guess what I'm saying is I'm not working with any of the tenants, I'm working with the owner, so if you have a problem, I go back to the.
Okay, so this could also be, this could also be about. Navigating who's, who has tendency within the buil- the building itself and the establishment itself. Um. The, the relationship that I had initially was incredible. I came, I was a, a single mother in a pandemic with a newborn by myself, and the mechanic who was heading up. Basically running the shop, but unbeknownst to me, was not the owner, but the one who was relational, um, as a neighbor. Would, would help me daily to actually, as I brought my baby in, would let me keep the car there. And we had an incredible relationship, and I'm very neighborly, and, you know. My, my work is in social work, so I, I, I am committed to, and my entire devotion of my life path is about. Healthy communication and relationships and conflict resolution is what I do for a living. Um, I do restorative justice work, so there's not like, oh, oblivious to the neighborhood, and I'm just coming in and buying up, and, you know, that's, that's not the story. Just to be clear, um, and. It was before I was over there, I was, I was somewhere else, where I had a beautiful relationship as well with the mechanics across the street. And, um, they would let me park my car, and I would pay them every day, so this, this particular time, it was incredible. The neighborly agreement that we came to together. Which was like, sure, you can, you can bring your baby in, there was never parking on the block, you can bring your baby in. And put her to sleep, and because I don't have family, because I was a single mom, um. He would move, he would, he would literally keep my car from me, or he would find a spot and text me where it was. At a certain point, he was like, give me a copy of your key, and I'll help you up, and it was literally three years of, they had my key on their hook. It was great, it was fine, and I would park my car and bring my baby in and come out in the morning. And they would tell me where my car was, so we were all about collaborative neighborly care, um, and friendship. And I came out one day to, uh, screaming cursing man I had never met, who I'd never seen. Um, who had also called a tow truck and some cops. And was very confused. And was unsure of what happened, and in front of me, when I said, well, wait, you have my keys, like, what's, you have my keys, what's the problem? I was then, uh, proceeded to witness him. Verbally assault, who I came to understand were his employees, and, um. There was. Power dynamics that were just unhealthy, these men were terrified of him, they were like. And, um. What has escalated and continued to be have been relational dynamics with many of the immediate neighbors on the block. As well as relationships between people working there and people owning there, where there's. There are screaming, there is cursing coming through the windows, there's, there are, um, fights. Happening on a regular basis that seem more of a interpersonal dynamic that is coming all up in this, into the block. And that's what many of myself and my neighbors are navigating, and that's not to mention. All sorts of, you know, cars piled up and waiting in line, and my kids, we can't cross the street without having to make sure that. There's multiple moments of. Vision and sight to see around the traffic pileup there, so. That is, that is a reality of dynamics, and it is not about lacking the attempts to work towards. Amicable communication and agreements, and being neighborly with one another without calling cops on each other, without threatening. Without screaming in one another's basis, um, for making a U-turn or for carrying a child.
Thank you very much for that, so I have. District manager Campbell.
I need to step up, I think there are people.
Okay, so in that case then? Okay, got it, so then in that case, I have Barden and Parker, and then I have Dawn Marie, do you have your handle?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, okay, so we'll do that, and then Nina, you'll go after Dawn Marie, so, um.
Actually, I think Renella was, kind of, you go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah, all right, so then Nella, then, right, yeah.
I have an observation, and then I have a question, um, observation, we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, the address is. Twenty-four seventy?
Bedford.
Dash she, okay, and I'm looking at the same picture that you're talking about, Nina, so I just want to clarify, because narratives matter. Um, this picture, the business is not open for what you're talking about, so this is not relative to like their operation. This is just New York City, if someone is in the bike lane, so I understand your frustration, but I don't want us to tie that to what's going on right now.
What business, I'm just, I'm not.
The business is shuttered, I'm looking at the picture that you're talking about with the car double parked, and then also just being careful, you said there's cars parked on the, on the sidewalk, there's multiple different businesses, there's no.
I understand.
Uh, one second, Nina, there's no business, and there's no cars parked in front of that business, there's a car double parked in front of the building that's on the corner. The residence building, and then the business down the block in this picture, so narrative matter, um, so I just want to make sure I named that observation. From this picture, it's not about their operation, I know district, um, manager Campbell named that there had been some, um, complaints about.
A lot, going back for many, many years, going back, I mean, this is, there is a, there's a long history.
No, no, I agree, and I'm, I'm just saying, though, like, being careful to pull in a picture of Google and saying.
I, I think that that's true, I think any snapshot in time is only going to tell you about that moment.
Right.
So I did try to collect things over a course of time.
Yeah.
Types of things, we're talking about parking on the sidewalk, which is an issue, but there's also working in the street, um, and things like that, so it's, it's.
I would be curious, um.
Been broad and long, and long lasting.
Yes.
It's the location.
I'd be curious, though, because I know I heard over the course of the year that there's been.
Yes.
So intentions to address that, and there has been improvements in this, I would like to know, like, has there actually, like, what does, over the year, what has complaints looked like, and is there like? Evidence to show that there has been improvement or not improvement, that would be very helpful, um, and then my question, I'm a, a little bit confused, because. In your response, you were stating that you guys, at least with the tenant, you had a beautiful relationship with, and I'm trying to understand the, who the person is that you don't have a relationship with, because.
What I came to understand was that the person that, that was the face of the business was actually an employee, and so the person that actually. Ran, like, was the owner of the mechanic shop, was not physically present on a regular basis over the other year period, to the point that. I came to understand the person who I had a relationship with, who was running the shop, I didn't even realize he wasn't. Eleven, you know what I'm saying?
And you're, and you're saying the relationship shift when you met the owner is a.
The owner came in and was, um. Yeah, shut, shut him down for having relationships with the neighbors that were positive and cultivating community, and shut. Any kind of communication down, I mean, at, at all, so I'm talking about who I ended up having the beautiful relationship with was an employee of. The owner of the mechanic shop, is that clear?
Yeah, I guess my question is, the original question I was asked is like, what attempts were made with the owner?
Yes, that's been, that has been shut down entirely, a, a complete refusal at any communication.
So, sorry, just for clarity, what has been the attempt, though, like, have you guys reached out to like have a sit down, like, what, I'm just looking for what, what it, what it is and what the response was?
Yes, it has been inviting meetings, knocking on the door, going into the office, responding to. Screaming and cursing as a, hey, let's talk, like, here's my phone number, let's have a conversation. Um. The, there has been a refuse, like, cut, cut off at the jump, a refusal to be in dialogue, a refusal to have a meeting, a refusal to sit down with other neighbors. There isn't, there has been an unwillingness to. Move into that direction, there have been attempts.
May I add to that answer?
Um. Yes, and then I have Barden, and then Dawn Marie, and Nina, yeah.
Just because I, I was unaware of this particular intrigue, but it does track with. Problems that when we've asked, uh, neighborhood coordination officers to go back, and again, it goes back a long time from, I'd even forgotten about Miguel. Um, that, um, you know, they're not treated with respect by the tenants, the business. Uh, sanitation has had issues with them when they've gone to speak to them as well, so this. Like I said, I don't know about this story, but it does track with things that have been reported to me by, you know, by other public servants.
And my, and to say, my direct neighbors are, um, a retired couple, she grew up there from infancy. And they wanted to be here today, um, so I understand this perception of like, who are you moving to the neighborhood, and, you know, don't you know? Um, but like, like, I am not a singular. Moment here who's delusional and coming with bias, like, that's not, that's not.
We get the calls from a lot.
Even though that does seem to be how I'm being received.
We have a, we have a list of people who call chronically about this location.
And their complaints are the same around like the yelling and the relation?
Um. Working on the sidewalk, welding on the sidewalk, painting on the sidewalk, cars not moving for A S P, cars on the sidewalk, and it's true that, that, that it's all. Three of the businesses, but we have the, this board has the opportunity to only weigh in on one, um.
And I, so that's what I'm saying, I would be interested to know, because there are other.
They all have, they have all, they have all encountered enforcement, they have all.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I.
Cars, cars have been towed from this location.
Mm-hmm, but I, I, that, we came back very recently to the Board of Standards and Appeals, and the owner has intermed that he's really trying, so I just wanted to know what the complaints are, and see if we can.
The owner's welcome to reach out to this office every time he's in the community to let us know, and, you know, we can, we can try to back up what they, what, what they're doing. Just like, feels just in genous at this point to hear this after all these years that the owner's been there on a regular basis, news to me.
I mean, he said that he has been since the last approval, which was in twenty twenty, so that's why I just, if I can see, and then. I've checked lots of different photos, and I've seen cars parking on sidewalks, and I've seen it with the, the bollards, which again, you said he didn't like, but that was the agreement with the B S A. In twenty twenty.
Okay, so I have Barden, Dawn Marie, Nina, and then.
Thanks, um, did we vote on it in twenty twenty?
Yeah.
It wasn't, it was an approval. It was an approval with stipulations and those stipulations.
Yeah, I just want to hear what I've got.
Carl, you have it?
The stipulation had to do with exactly these problems.
I definitely remember the. I remember the sidewalk.
And that's why I keep it started.
Can I just hear it? Is it too long or?
To extend the term for two years with the stipulation of adherence to CFO and all city ordinances. One hours of operation limited to ninety-six P M Monday through Saturday. No parking vehicles on sidewalk. There shall be no body fender work or painting done on premises.
Okay, and, and the violations that you have a record of since then implies the situation improved, didn't improve with the same.
My sense is that there has not been improvement.
Okay.
Has that been documented?
Yes, I have, I have documentation. I asked. For the past five years, I've got illegal parking block driveway noise, commercial vehicle, graffiti, loud music party. Um so, yeah. This goes back for five years and then I also have um emails, I'm sorry, I'll try to find that too. Where the business said it was the other businesses, the NCOs went and they confirmed that it was the business at twenty-four, seventy, eighty. So here it is. NCOs have confirmed that some of the actions in question, such as sidewalk parking, have been at the subject site.
I mean, is it still going on after Mike?
Yeah. When was the last time we got a phone call from um, um, Mr. P?
Yeah, um, it wasn't on, it wasn't from months ago, possibly, like many five or six.
And then, and then we got, we, you know, we did get other letters from other community members and, you know, but but I let them know that I would represent that we have data that the, these complaints come into our office, but we cannot present testimony by proxy.
I mean, I can say that what I, when the employee who is no longer there, who I had a great relationship with. Um, the, our unspoken agreement was basically when I came home from picking up my daughter from school or whatever, like their cars that were all parked there to be worked on. I would just text him and he would be like, okay, okay, I'm coming out. And he'd move it back into the shop and I could park my car. But, so like, they are certainly like storing their cars up and down the block. That is like one hundred percent, I can testify to that. One hundred percent.
Thank you. So next up, we have um Dawn Marie.
My question was answered.
Okay, your question was answered. Okay, so then, Greg, did you have?
I had a couple of questions.
So then, let me, uh, okay, so will you have your questions and then Nina and then um, Clarissa?
Go ahead.
Either way, um, all right, I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, there's keep mentioning the owner. I'm just trying to figure out who that is because on the prior application, I think this application as well, is it Irma Fortetsky? Is that who it is?
Mm-hmm, but I speak to her son because she's an older woman.
Okay, so her son and she's, she's, okay, so that, that clears that up. Number two, um uh, and uh, Sean, you read a couple of them off, but the, I'm just looking at the twenty twenty BSA decision. And there are a couple of conditions in here that, um, well, the first one brought up is that there should be no auto body fender or spray work uh performed on the premises. It sounds like there are, is, maybe I'll direct this to Sean. What, what's, what's our remedy? If there's a violation of a condition in the BSA? Can we go back to the BSA and, you know, demand a public hearing to consider it?
We actually did, we, we raised issues with the BSA before and there was no action taken. I don't know if that's a zoning violation and enforceable by DOB, but you know the history of this office with DOB zoning violation enforcements.
Okay, all right, so that's kind of what I figured too.
The violation kind of, by the way, and from my perspective as a zoning attorney, did you get ten year extensions on this? We got a year. So the violation was, we're going to come back and see if things are better.
Right.
That's why I'm saying I hope that, but, but there are a lot of things going on in this block, a lot.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's also owner to tenant. There's like a lot going on here.
Well, right, but if, if your client is the owner, the owner obviously is the
Yeah.
Responsible party.
That's why I'm here to, here you're.
Yeah, okay. Uh, just one other question on a, on a condition, just wondering what's happened with it. Um, there was a condition to call for street trees that, to me, would probably solve the problem to keep people off the sidewalk. Where it was either street trees were to be installed. And if not, then you would have, then an application was going to be made to, to get streets trees installed. Do we know what, what, what happened there? Has anything happened in the last four years?
Trees.
No.
No, these plans match exactly the previously approved, which is also in my application, I submitted to, but I didn't bring it with me. But these plans match that. So was that a condition of your board or the BSA?
It was in the BSA. It ended up in the BSA decision. I can, yeah, it was the twenty twenty decision if you want to look at it.
I shouldn't have said that.
I have to look or, and I pictured, I have to double check that for you.
Yeah, no, I, I guess for me, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we're trying to assess, has there been any improvement or remedial measures that it has taken the last four years to justify? One, the extension, and then two, you know, the request for ten years sounds a little difficult at this point considering current conditions, but um you know, just to figure out what efforts have been made. And I think that, that was the purpose of the eighteen months, I think, to figure out what, what would change in that time.
I guess too, is I have a copy of the previously approved plans. And we have to match exactly what the plans look like. And I know there says a condition of treats, but there are no treats on this plan and it's a DOB plan's rule.
Right, I think the intention was, was prospectively, because the way, the way it reads is um
Okay.
This means trees shall be planted, the applicant shall apply for irreplicable consent for benches, actually. Oh, that's not a reads. So there, there, there should have been some sort of affirmative effort instead of the bollards that are out there or the cones that they use on a daily basis to to maybe just solve the problem, at least on their site, right? So to, to remove the sidewalk issue. And I think that was the, that was the effort there to create barriers to.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. And the trees, we can't plant trees unless they're shown on the plan. Otherwise, the DOB won't approve. Trees. Do you get an approved plan?
Well, 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 I think, I wasn't, wasn't the.
Yeah, I know, but I guess I wasn't the attorney last time, but that's why I'm confused why the resolution says one thing and the plans show something else.
Yeah, I don't. No, no, I get that, but I don't know if it was necessarily the, a, a condition that had to necessarily be put on the plans because it was going to be prospective and they, and no one knew who would be arranging that or if there would be benches that would be put out.
What I'm saying is I have to show that now on the, on the BSA plans they have been approved. So put that in the conditions now. And we have to put that on the plan because the DOB won't approve it even in the future unless it matches the BSA plans.
All right, so this time we'll, we'll have to say.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is anything you want has to be on the plans. I can't. I can't put in a tree.
But there hasn't even been that.
Yeah, I cannot put, I, I just, in my experience, sorry, in eight years, if I don't show a tree planting, I can't, you can't put one in.
But it, but it would be in the right of way. It wouldn't necessarily be, you know, on these plans. These plans are just showing the building. We're, we're, I don't see anything where it's showing the full extent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I wasn't here last time. I just know that my experience.
No, that's fair enough.
Examiners are very like deep, like picky, like everything has to look exactly the way the BSA approved it. And that is my experience. So we put all kinds of crazy rules on BSA.
All right, but it's.
BSA's approval with that stipulation.
Correct.
But that's what I'm saying. That's why I'm saying I don't know why it went down like that. I just knew that my experience is plans only. So whatever your conditions are, I would say put on the plans whatever you're looking for.
All right, do we also have to put on the plans no repair work performed on the sidewalk? Do we have to put no storage at display?
No, but I'm saying a physical, uh, anything physical, like a fence or a tree or.
No, no, I, I, I understand that, but if, if you're saying that, you know, the, for the conditions
Definitely, but I'm just saying, physical conditions, because when the DOB examiner looks at it.
Right, but it, but it's a, I'm saying it's a prospective, prospective condition as opposed to something that you're going, that they were going to do immediately, because I think it was something that they had to apply for as well. And I guess there was no.
Yeah, then you apply to the city for a street tree planting if it's in the ground.
Right, right.
Sorry.
Hmm, okay.
Can I ask you a question? Um, that we have applicants apply for variances so that they can use the property for something other than what it is zoned for, right? And this is zoned for residential use? And it's ours?
Our sixth, I think.
Something, okay.
Yeah, so how is the um new um laws that went to the new How does that affect this?
Because it's still a new residence. Residential district and this is a manufacturing. So, uh, somebody talked about parking the cars in another space. I'd have to find another space that was manufacturing to park those cars on. You can't park in a residential district. And these, these things are really tricky because they went up pre-zoning, which was in nineteen sixty-four. This was in nineteen twenty-four. So that's kind of why it's like grandfathered. The eleven four one clause, which is under, is like, if you've been here forever, you can continue to be here. And that's like, you can't like put a new automotive repair here.
You can continue to be there, but you can't continue to break the laws.
Right.
Okay, and the laws are no, no parking vehicles on sidewalks and no parking in bike lanes. That is a law. And I have gotten taxi drivers five hundred dollar fines for driving or parking in bike lanes. It's not something I do often, but once in a while I've and just said, you know, I had a guy actually literally driving directly at me in a bike lane. I was like, whoa, you know, and I said, that was so egregious, you know? But, but here's the thing, you know, we're getting a lot of, uh, he done it, he done it kind of stuff regarding, oh, it's not this address, it's not that. When, when I'm going by, when I look at these pictures, to me, it all looks like one, uh, you know, uh, what is it? Uh, twenty-four seventy Bedford Ave, whether it's twenty-four seventy A, B, C, I don't know. It's one continuous thing, okay? My question is, I mean, I don't know what's going on with these other businesses. If they're allegedly not the same business, um, as far as anything being shuttered. Yeah, they keep doors down, but you can see front doors are open. Nothing shutter, okay? Unless it was taken off, you know, when it wasn't business hours. My question is, do we, do we need, and is there a net mechanism for bringing all whatever it is, three or four in and saying, this has to stop?
It's a, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's just, this is like, you know.
It's weird, it's weird. If you look at the other COs, like I looked at the CO for twenty-four sixty. And, you know, it's from sixty-one. They don't mention anything about BSA approvals.
Thing is, if you were, you were pre-zoning and you're grandfathered and you never had to go to the BSA, you never changed anything.
Yeah, but I mean, they originally got a variance in twenty-four. I guess it was because they kept expanding and they were subject to the original variance.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you don't get a condition, so a long time ago, boards could choose whether they put in a term of years. So if they've never put in a term of years, you can be there forever unless you make a major change without going back.
Right, understood.
Yeah, so this one had a term of years. So that's where it brought it in.
Yeah, because I, I looked at the, I looked at the sixty zoning resolution. And, you know, garages over five cars were not permitted then. It was actually up to two cars, I think, that were permitted in residence zone. So it, it still doesn't make a lot of sense as to sixty, twenty-four sixty. You know, here, I guess you're attached because you were attached all along.
Because I, I mean, I, this is a totally different case, but I uh represent a lot of auto body type of things. I'd somewhere that's a, on a residential street across from a train track, no residents wants to be there. And it's all manufacturing, but it's a residential district. So the one guy bought it and he's like, oh my God, I have a term. I have to go back to the BSA. I haven't been there in thirty years. So I did that guy, but every other guy in the street doesn't have to go.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I just have one more question. So, uh, it looks like the application you're asking for, uh, an amendment to eliminate the requirement for restrictive declaration to report against the property. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so a restrictive declaration is usually like an easement or something and it's put on acress. And forever. But the problem with that and why I see a problem with this is can't be forever if there's a term. So we have to void it every time we come back to you in acress. And then re-put another restricted thing. So I guess I just felt like that, or we felt like that's a, like, nobody else has to do that. The BSA is supposed to be the point with the conditions that stops it. And I, I think they were trying to protect the community by doing that and I appreciate that, but I think this is the not the best use of way to do it because acress is like a deed or an easement or whatever. And the BSA part of it is the part that it's always attached. It's always always.
I would generally agree with you. I'm, I'm also averse to those, but I, I think, you know, the issue here is that those conditions are meant to tie it here where we have sort of a history of, of issues going on with the property.
Yeah.
And if the BSA conditions that were in twenty twenty are, it turns out not enforceable anyway. Um, you know, it seems to me that, you know, having that restriction attached to it at least provides, you know, some, some different measure or some different word out to either, you know, regulatory or somebody that there are these restrictions on the property. And you would be able to lift it, you know, say, the property owner decides.
That process each time.
Yeah.
So I guess, and it goes to the Department of Finance, who I also don't think is the right people to enforce this.
Well, that's.
I guess if you don't agree, please put that in the conditions. I just felt like the CFO, the DOB and fire department and the people, and the BSA should be the ones that are enforcing.
But that, that, that presupposes that this gets approved in perpetuity too, but.
No, I'm just saying that the things on acress are in perpetuity, but the restrictive deck has, has a date on it. So it's putting in the acress, which is like a deed, an easement or whatever. It's not relevant anymore. So we have to get, take it out of acress and then put a new thing in it. Like it's it, it's, it's the Department of Finance's thing. It doesn't really link up. I've never seen that before in any of these. I've never, ever seen it. So if you don't.
Time, time.
What?
Where it has the time period.
Yeah, everything I put in acress is like a forever thing. So that's why the certificate of occupancy is supposed to say all the conditions and it expires and then it's no longer valid. And then you get a new certificate of occupancy and that's how the process is usually supposed to work. But if you don't agree with me, I respect that. That is.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Okay, so board member upon them?
I just wanted to say that a comment was made about it all like looking the same. And that is a very dangerous uh comment to make because we need to make the distinction. Because granted, it's the, there are multiple businesses in one building, but if you know, one of the, one of these buildings or three out of the four of these businesses aren't doing, quote unquote, not doing anything, and then every, everybody Paul has to pay for all, right? And I say that, I say that because while the building, we're talking about twenty-four seventy Bedford Avenue.
Yeah.
Right next to twenty-four seventy Bedford Avenue is another mechanic, two other mechanic businesses that I know for sure, they are the ones that do the painting. I look at the businesses, one is, one sells parts, one deals with tires. The other person, the other entity, which I know it is the, the, the garage here that is the garage opening with roll down gate, they do all of their repairs inside of the business. Again, I have personal experience. I spent a lot of time there over the summer. So that's why I tried to emphasize that it is very important to distinct, granted, all of the businesses may have had their complaints in the past, but to distinct which businesses are doing what and who's complaining where, because it does make the difference. There are cones on the street. I have not observed any cars being worked on. All of the cars, there may be cars double parked, but all cars get driven into the back to be repaired. I have no skin in the game with them. They are not paying me. I just think it is very important to decipher because it'll be one thing, but we all have a difference of opinion and it will be unfair for us to be grouped as one. We are all individuals and businesses are the same. Thank you.
And so do I have any other board members who have um questions? Okay, so then, um, I do have a question. I would like some more clarity regarding what it is that's being asked of by the owner, because I heard what was spoken about regarding the acress and the restrictive declaration. But it all went over my head.
Okay, so I'll just break down the three things you said.
Yes.
So first, it's an extension of term.
Okay.
We'd like to operate there for another ten years, but we're going back to the BSA. If you don't think that's appropriate, you can write whatever condition.
So that's term number one. So term number one is you would like to get a ten year
Extension.
Extension, okay.
Yeah, and if you don't agree. Okay, the next thing is a waiver of the rules. Doing the easiest first. That is because we filed late, so we paid. So that is what that is. We were supposed to file within thirty days of twenty twenty-two.
And by waiver of the rules, are you specifically talking about the things that are in the statement of facts regarding? And by waiver of the rules, are you specifically talking about the things that are in the statement of facts regarding the conditions for the BSA from twenty twenty?
Twenty, in twenty twenty two, BSA requires from the expiration of term you file within thirty days.
Yes.
If you don't do that, you're waiving.
You're just waiving the time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not like any other rules.
Just a late week.
Yeah, we, we, we have. Um, we have to pay for it. Um, so, and then the third is an amendment because we don't want to do the restrictive declaration part, we don't think it makes sense. But again, if you don't agree, pay for an amendment, you don't want us to have an amendment, we'll get an amendment, just open for standards and appeals. That is so we don't have to file a strict declaration, never seen that on another. And those are the moving parts, exactly.
Um, it helps me, that's more, you know, that I see that.
But we don't seek any changes to the building or the interior or anything on the plans, they match the exact same plans as before. And that's what I was talking about with the trees, the plans matched from before. But if there's any request to change anything on the plans, we go to the Board of Standards and Appeals, which we don't have a date yet.
Okay, so then, so then given, given the conversation that, you know, we've had so far and then um the terms that I did see in the statement of facts regarding the, I think, the, the twenty twenty decision, right? So where do, like, for instance, the one that says about hours of operation nine AM to six PM Monday or Saturday, right? So where does that fit within these three bullets, right? So like you mentioned.
Those, those are just conditions of the extension of the term.
Ah, okay, got it.
So if you look at one extension of the term, you could do stipulated upon or conditioned upon.
Still be part of that extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there might be new conditions, whatever they.
That's a possibility, okay, thank you for that, fair.
Or there could be no need for conditions if the board were to vote to not extend it at all.
Understood, understood.
It's, it's, it's not an extension of two years to ten years, it's an extension of zero years to ten years.
Mhm. Okay, understood. Thank you for that clarity, I appreciate that.
Do we approve, deny or approve with conditions? Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding, I was thinking.
And I'm trying to tell you, if you choose to do it with conditions, I'm trying to give you ideas of things that you could put if you find them helpful. Like the tree.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if I, yeah, so if I understand it correctly, like, a denial vote would be a vote to not extend, to not provide an extension. That would be that, and then approving outright would then just be, just approving.
Same conditions.
With the same conditions and then approving with conditions, but then, I guess, there'd be conversation about what those would be. So that's my understanding of the decisions that are before us, then, given the conversation.
I'll, I'll note that the conditions, that this was approved with conditions and none of the conditions, there, there never seemed to be a good faith effort to meet those conditions. So reiterating those conditions, um, we should be thoughtful about it.
Okay.
And then if there is no variance, does that mean it can, it's no longer, there can no longer be manufacturing use? Would it go to residential use?
Yeah, we're back to a.
One of those.
Yeah, maybe there's some.
I'm just saying, not what it would go to, like the building next door, that's where the money's at.
Great, were you gonna say something?
Uh, well, I mean, I'm just trying to like sort out what our options here, here. I mean, we can, we could extend it, which would be, you know, I, 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 I would, I would say, or lose, I, I, I don't know if I could support ten years, but, you know, you could argue maybe another two years to see if they get their act together, you know, so to speak. Um, or you can, you can propose it as a denial with all of the conditions and our concerns. And that would, you know, obviously put a finer point on our, you know, on some of ours, any, anyway, objections to the operation, you know, that's going on out there. So I, you know, for me, I could probably go either way, but I'll, you know, I open it up to the floor to sort of consider.
Member for something. You just, so these are three different tenants in a single building and if we deny this one, the, the opportunity to be commercial and say that it has to be residential, my guess is there's no way to fit a residential tenant in that building considering its configuration.
Oh, the building gets, it gets sold and it gets.
That's.
It gets developed, consider, you know, like what's going on.
It can go pretty big.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, sorry, you guys are the board, you know.
No, so my point is that when this landlord may lose this one third of his income, he may then turn to the, the logical, you know, selling site.
He doesn't own the two next door.
About A, B, C, we're all part of the.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to think, careful.
So calm down.
Yeah, that's why we're saying narrative matter because we keep saying.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought if one landlord owns.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Can, can we put up like the aerial with like the tech?
Yes, that's, that's.
Yeah. Because the folks, it's got one address.
Thought they were A, B, C. Three tenants.
Sorry, I was, I think so, so residential development would be questionable because you're not going to do a little residential.
Yeah.
These like, there was no futrist by this. Sorry, I'm one, but lately you've been seeing these.
Yeah.
Monstrosities in between.
It's new for the satellite view. Okay, but first I wanted to say this and then we can do this. Because I wanted everybody to conceptualize what could happen if this is a denial. This is the residential site that went up.
Yep.
R six, city of yes, you can do a bigger R six.
Yes.
So this is our site, it's bigger than the one next door. If you really wanted to make money and not keep the tenants, yes, he could sell to developer and they can develop something bigger than what just went there. This, all of these, these are the other businesses we're discussing, doesn't own them, no BSA, no control, he can't do anything about them. Okay, so now we can go to the aerial. And then you, oh, go back up.
That back one was good, yeah.
Yeah. He doesn't own any of these.
Yes, thank you.
And this is the old aerial too.
But this is about twice or three times the size.
You can get a big building and deny this.
I invented that they were.
That's what we were trying to say that.
They can ride those patients.
That's the building, buy sunlight to all of these buildings that's right in front of there, because this is a one story building. So if they go up four, five, six floors, they buy sunlight.
Yes, it's gonna happen eventually.
Okay, so it is.
Well, we're gonna slow it down the best way we can.
Very, that's reasonable, so I said, can very serious pressure.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, even similar density to what, what's next to it.
Yeah, probably higher.
To the left.
I mean, it's gonna be higher, yeah. Saying, I'm just saying, was I am correct. It's not like the reason.
But there was no hope because that's a building on the corner, there was no.
Twenty four.
Care less about sunlight, whatever, but you know what, whatever.
No, it's not whatever.
Was anyone else ready?
It's like, like, no.
Chris, you had something?
I'd wondered if there were any other members of the public who are registered to speak.
Did we have, I don't see.
No, like I said, there were a lot of, you know, some people who didn't want to come out, who weren't comfortable coming out tonight, but I told them that they couldn't, I couldn't read their testimony, there's no testimony by proxy. So there's one member of the community, there's two people from around the corner observing.
All of whom have very valid concerns.
Unusually quiet. Why?
I mean.
This is the one.
I'm feeling, to share my, whatever. Yeah, I'm feeling inclined to do an approval with conditions that are far under ten years, like a year or two years, and insist on all of the conditions that were put there and adding what we have and doing what we can to get some sort of proof of evidence of a good faith effort. I don't know what kind of conditions we can build in to show that, maybe none, but one more chance to prove that they can do better. I think we could definitely put in our recommendation that we're, our frustrations with, we've been down this road before, haven't seen marketable improvement and that, you know, we're really, you know, we're really seeking something here and that's why at most we could support, you know, a short, a short extension.
It seems like two years is five years though, right?
It's just, it's really, if I'm gonna be honest with you about my appliance, it's really, it takes so long to hire all the people necessary and then, I'm just, it is a process.
But everything is hard.
Yeah.
Everything is hard, but it doesn't mean that you don't have to do it the right way, even though it's hard.
Years, nothing at the BSA is two years, that's why, like, if you gave them five years, like.
Five years would be seven years with, at the.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying five years, I call the client in at two and say, are you ready to start the process again? I would have to call them before I even finish this one, the two.
Okay, I really like you, I'm just not.
Yeah. No, I have to say that, that's my experience, like.
With you. You need to get your act together.
I think five years would be, that's what I'm trying to say.
So I.
I would go to five.
Let me. I hear um board member Minnick, right?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to ask, like, if, with, with an extension of another two years.
Yes.
Three, if that, that, that's what we would go with, if we're just asking for the same, same requirements, same restrictions, all of that, nothing else is actually changing.
Yeah.
We're just asking, please, in that time, show us what you're doing, what we mean you can actually take.
I would say they need to request the compliance hearing because what happens is after the BSA, we wait four months to get a resolution. It starts at the day they approved it, after we wait four months to get a resolution, we give that resolution to the architect, the architect contact, the expediter. The expediter has to get a new certificate of occupancy, he files with the Department of Buildings, he waits for inspections, those take five or six months. Yes, sorry.
Okay.
I'm just trying to tell you.
I, I understand, but I, I, I guess I'm also thinking about the things like making sure that traffic is out of the streets, out of the bike lanes.
Yeah.
Opening up the, the guards and the, things, things like that. And I guess everything that's already written in there and the things that don't involve calls on phones.
Yeah.
And of all of the.
Swearing insanity.
So that's what I'm saying, like. The best thing, if we put on a section, doesn't request filing a new certificate of occupancy, which is what takes all of that time. Just like after the resolution, you have to get there and order to file and again.
I, I hear that, but in my experience, it only takes five minutes to walk into a garage and.
No, I know.
Take it out to the street and then just keep doing that day every day.
That, that I agree with, I'm just trying to explain the BSA process.
I, I understand, I, I work for the city, trust me, I. No, I, so I, I understand that, yeah, I, I'm thinking about the other piece of this, the whole occupancy.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying like something like a compliance hearing or that you request in your conditions to go back to the BSA without a new certificate of occupancy, because that's a part, it should be, and I don't know, it's not trying to be reached to the DOB, you can be sitting forever.
I agree, yeah.
That's, that's being a really kind of DOB.
That's why it can be kind.
I get it.
So um, I think board member Prasan, that you have.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still wrestling with the division of responsibility between the landlord and tenant. I mean, as far as we know, maybe the landlord has been writing back to the tenant, the tenant has been ignoring it, didn't say he's gonna do it or whatever. So we're kind of stuck with this he said, she said. I mean, I guess what we're faced with here is do we pull the plug on the landlord's livelihood? Because he or she has picked um an unfortunate tenant? And could we simply say we'll consider approving it if they get a new tenant?
I, I don't know if that, if that's what's in the purview of the business, I don't know.
Thinking out of the box here.
So, board member Parker?
For the, for me was, I feel like it's coming up a lot with a lot of the interpersonal stuff that's happening. I've heard from you around like the relationship matter and I've heard about like the swearing at like different department. Who, do we, have, have you identified that it's the owner doing that or is that?
No, it's not the owner, the owner lives in New Jersey, the owner lives in New Jersey, right?
That's why.
Whatever.
And, and then, that's why, that's, but the reason I'm asking.
And every couple of weeks to like, make sure there's nothing on the side.
Yeah.
Saying he, he has, take, every time he visits, he's been sending the picture. Nice family.
Yeah, they're trying, right?
But that's the thing that matters because this is, we're not, this is not about the tenant right now, like this application is the owner about, about this. So when we make a decision, it's against the owner, not the people.
That's.
Right.
But he's responsible for.
No, no, a, agreed, but like, when, when we're messaging thing out, what I'm hearing right now, we keep saying like, this business, this location has been an issue. I, it's coming up as like the owner has been the one that's been the one having like the, the negative interpersonal relationships, but in reality, it's the, the tenant. So I think to your point, is there?
This is a longstanding tenant though, right? This tenant has been the tenant for a year, for decades.
Like the owner told me, or like I went here, I talked to him over a while and he's like, I really don't want to shut down anybody's business, who's been there a long time. Like I, I could just sell this to a developer, but like I don't want to stop anyone thriving, but and that's, I think that's.
The thing, yeah, the thing like um. Yeah, the thing that um, the thing that I, you know, I think the challenge, the challenge personally here, right? It's, it's balancing, it's balancing the concerns of people that buy there who've had a negative experience in relationship with. The tenant, right? And balancing that with people who have had a positive relationship with that tenant? And then also balancing that with the reality of like the real estate economics as well, right? Like I think that's the challenge, like there's pain that you've experienced and then some of your neighbors have experienced. And at the same time, also had positive relationships there, there are people here who've had positive relationships with that tenant as well too, right? Um, and so I. Board member Bronson, like I, I see where you're coming from with uh where you're leaning towards, because I feel that way too, where um I, I don't like a tenure. Tenure seems way too long, um, and, you know, I'm definitely, it's tough, like I know for me personally, um, I'm leaning towards giving person one more shot, basically, but um I'm, I'm leaning towards that on a short window. Um, just because the stuff's already been written on paper and there's some more, there's been some more pain points that have come up, right? So there's definitely some more conditions that need to be put in and, you know, like you mentioned, the compliance hearing is maybe a way to.
Yeah, I'm just giving.
It's, it's an idea, right?
I'm throwing an idea.
Like.
Can you better understand that, is that a way to sort of post hone being, recommending an approval?
No, so what that is, is it's written into the conditions, you still have to go out and get a CO. But it says that you're required to come back to the board to show like essentially the same things you would show in a hearing, but you don't have a hearing. It's like with the BSA or staff, it's more.
It's the compliance hearing is at BSA.
Yeah, the BSA would have the compliance hearing and it would.
And have, and, and, and is there a, a timeframe that they usually have, and was a compliance hearing within a year or compliance?
They usually want to see you guys certificate of occupancy because you get inspection from that. So they usually give you eighteen months because that's how long a certificate of occupancy takes to get. And a good time, I'm doing a lot of extensions of time. And then, and then if that still works, then you don't lose however many years you got, five percent, whatever you got, but you come back within eighteen months or something to check that year. So it's, it's open ended, but that's how I see it.
It makes feelings about city of yes, but it does seem ironic that we've just approved city of yes, that's going to really, you know, prioritize housing, but that we're going to give a residential zone over to a manufacturing, so.
Yeah, but it, like you said, it's an old, it's been there, that's kind of why it's a grandfather use. It's now, once that turns into a residential building, we'll never turn back into this.
Because it's, yeah, appropriate to the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm saying however you feel about it, I'm just like, if that's how you feel about it, it should be a big residential building, then that's how it should be. If you need car, likes car fixed, if you need your cars fixed, that's, it's been there.
So last call for any additional questions or comments? Yes.
I think we should grant them the extension and.
What time though?
I would, my thing, I would say five years, you might not agree with me, but five years, because we did it twenty twenty and we're now in twenty twenty five.
No, but that was a two year extension.
Yes.
It was a two year extension.
Yes, yeah.
But. And that, that was a two year extension that we had written, we actually wrote to Marjorie Pearl, mother was the chair of BSA and told them that even after granting that extension, they had made no good faith effort on, on the, just a little bit like Charlie Brown and the football feels like, but.
But I just hate to see a, uh, somebody livelihood be taken away.
I think we all do, I, I did, I don't think that anyone here is chomping at the bit to take away anyone's.
My opinion.
No, I'm saying, but I'm just saying that I, I don't think anyone here is eager to take away anybody's livelihood, whether they're the, the tenants who are doing the, you know, auto work or the owner of the building. I think the, the issue is that, you know, if they're going to stay there, they've got to get their act together.
Way to do sort of like a, a boom, boom extension, so like a two year, that wasn't clear?
I did, I just.
So, so like a two year extension with a compliance hearing within eighteen months upon which should, should that be a, a, a positive. should should that be a a a positive finding that two years then triggers another two years, ending up with a four-year extension?
Well, and if we get the compliance.
Hearing being po- positive, is that a thing?
Yeah, if we get.
See if we give it a try. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, and if the timing works, you know, if we get it, if if, you know, subject to good compliance, come back in two years or whatever. And then we can talk about a longer extension.
That one, yeah.
So then we have a motion.
Can I just get? Did you say we wrote back to BSA in twenty twenty two?
No, it was twenty, this was before. I'm sorry, it was in twenty nineteen.
Oh, forget, okay. Fine, fine, fine.
Yeah.
I, okay, I just.
So in twenty nineteen, we said that they weren't, they weren't complying, and then twenty twenty two, we gave them another chance, and now it's twenty twenty four and five, or twenty twenty five it is.
Yeah, to throw myself on the sword a little bit, I really panicked when City of Yes language came out. I could have filed this like a few months ahead of time, but I was like, oh, my God, everything's changing, which I don't want to do this over and over and over and over.
That's fair.
So I'm just saying that, like, yeah, they were late, but they were extra late because I was like, oh, my God.
Your delay was only months.
But I I guess, I know, but I just, I just want to like give them a little whatever, because the guy, you know, was really nervous. He's like, I hired this, but I hired it like the owner. I can't speak on the tenants. But I just want to tell you that, like, could have been a half year earlier. Fourteen hundred pages of page.
We know.
Congress is calling and they're like, so what can I build here? And I'm like.
Give me a week.
Yeah, yeah, like that. I don't like using that as a negotiating.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to, I just feel bad, so.
So then, so then let me, let me try this and then people let me know on, you know, if I have the language right or if I have this. Um, and so I'm making um the recommendation is for a two-year extension with a um BSA compliance hearing and subject to a positive outcome of the BSA compliance hearing. Then an additional two years um would be granted for the extension.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
Okay, versus, I think we'd have to specify when the compliance hearing be, but then we're sort of giving up our participation.
That's what I, that's.
It sort of triggers immediately.
Yeah, I don't like.
Another two years. I really would like, if we do give an extension of any period of time, I really would like them to have to come back and face us rather than us get an automatic trigger.
Yeah.
Two, three, two years, depending on what BSA.
I agree with your comments, yeah.
Well, during the the compliance hearing process, is that subject to community board comments or does it go directly to the BSA?
Not because I'm not trying to be a pain in the ass here, but yeah, it's an internal process, so you don't have to go back through the C O. This whole thing triggers a certificate of occupancy. So it's an internal thing, but maybe you can request that you contacted when it happens. I don't, I don't know. I've never, we've never gotten into the weeds more than a compliance hearing, so I'm sorry. You have any creative ideas, you could put them in your conditions and maybe the board.
So then, Mark, again.
Then it's just a two-year extension with a compliance hearing within those two years, at which point they have to come back again, and they'll have much smoother sailing. You will be out of here so much earlier because it'll be a positive picture.
Yeah. So then let me, so then given that feedback, let me, let me take another crack at this. Um, so the recommendation is for a two-year extension um with uh BSA compliance.
Do we have to sort of maintain the conditions that were stated before because that's what they're complying with?
Yes.
Right?
Those conditions must be a part of it, yes.
And.
I thought there's additional ones that popped up from this conversation, right?
But how soon can you get the?
Compliance hearing?
Yeah, we could, we could ask for, I think we could set a time or we could recommend a timeframe where we would want to see that and.
So the point I was saying is usually they do it to prove that you you.
That you met your conditions.
C O, that's why I said eighteen months, but if you only do a two-year extension, then the compliance hearing is usually, because then you get two years. You get eighteen months to get your C C O. Right when you get it, six months later, you have to file again to the board and get a new C O.
So then the pushback, the pushback on that would be that you've heard from, you've heard from some people, you've heard from some board members, members of the public that while you've had people who've had good experiences, you have other people who've had negative experiences where they haven't seen a follow-through of those existing.
Yeah, but I'm saying if you do two years, then just do two years. There's no compliance hearing because.
Well, can we ask then for um after a year to be supplied by the applicant? You know, all of the remedial measures that have been undertaken for them to appear before us to present that in that information as well. So that that will factor in then to our reconsideration at the two-year mark, something like that.
Yeah, but at the two-year mark, if you get two years, I go through this whole process again and you see the.
Well, right, but we. Yeah.
Can it go the other way? Can it be a a a two-year ex? Or or a longer extension? Could it be a four-year extension, just say, or a three-year extension with a compliance hearing within eighteen months? Should the, should the, should the compliance hearing not have a positive outcome, the remaining extension would be withdrawn?
Remaining extension, meaning.
So if we did, if you, if you did say a three, you would a three, yeah, the remainder of the extension becomes is withdrawn.
Wow.
We could do that.
I'm asking.
Is there anywhere you can bring the tenants in and we hear from them why they haven't been?
Oh, it's an excellent question.
Doing the inspection, doing what they supposed to be, right?
Yeah, I, what, where are we on the clock with this? How many more days?
On the BSA calendar, and even if I was, they don't close and grant in the same period. It would, it would give me another hearing. So I guess what I'm saying is, okay, let's say they put me on at the end of February, let's just say. I wouldn't get granted at the end of February. I would be put on in March or April for another hearing. So if you want the tenants to come and you want us to do this again, and then, you know, that would help get us a longer extension so you can see what's going on or whatever. And you, everybody thinks it's worth it, then I can request that and next month or something, we can come back.
So then the board would be sort of tabling a recommendation of i- until and upon hearing from the tenants of the at the.
I would like.
Yeah, so they can come and give their side of the story. They're not getting the, we're not getting to hear their thoughts on this.
But also they're not hearing sort of, you know, it's one thing to hear from a neighbor on the block and you can blow it off and say, oh, that nag. You know, I'm whatever, you know, just kind of traumatizing here. It's another thing when they hear from a community board who said, you know, and and the district managers is, I'm getting calls like, I mean, because people aren't going to call you every day because they've got other things to do and they kind of, there's a kind of a give up. Yeah, called and I, you know, I complained, that kind of thing. You know, but but I think, I think then it it means that the tenant may feel more pressured if they recognize that it's not just a disgruntled neighbor or two or whatever they want to say it is, but that it's a a larger body of people that are expressing concern because there are complaints and and issues that they may not be hearing about directly, that people aren't going up to them and say, you know, I mean, I'm not stopping when I'm on my bicycle after a day of work and and knocking on their doors saying, hey, can you get these vehicles out of the bike lane? I just, you know, grit my teeth and try to get by safely, and I'm not the only person. And it's the vehicles too that are not pushed over and and if there's anyone double parked on the other side, then, you know, you you get this, you know, um, what game of chicken where vehicles are aiming at each other. It means all kinds of things, you know.
So I see um.
My question, what if the tenant doesn't want to come in?
Yeah, I have to ask them, I remember the owners.
Yeah, there's nothing.
That's pretty revealing.
I mean, yeah, obviously, yes, right? Like if they, if they, if they don't want to come, then yeah.
Wow, that's, I know what I've said.
Then it's like the kind of the store that didn't show up.
I would also just wonder, it's like if if we could have the tenant and the owner both be be here, I would see it as both of their responsibility.
Oh, absolutely.
At all of these issues. And just to make sure that there's communication happening between them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no problem. And I usually just come because, you know, this is, they don't know about the certificate of occupancy, so all this different stuff is. You know, I don't want to like start some war about things that no one gets and everyone's like, you know. So if that's a request, I'm happy to go and make it. I just, I'm telling you why I came alone is.
Yeah, no, that's the norm. Nobody thinks that's.
Stolen this board, I'll be here again someday.
We're not compelled to issue a recommendation within the timeframe, or can you, can you agree to extend it? I'm just wondering.
That's what I asked her about the clock and she said she's not.
So I guess I'm saying I have to tell, what, we have to notify everyone when we give a, when the hearing comes up, and I'm not scheduled yet. So if you want to put us on for like next month in February.
Well, no, that that's not the question. The question is.
Doubt because we're not at the BSA yet, so like, I guess, you know, on good faith, I will tell you when we're going to have a hearing and that I need to meet before X day or you won't be able to speak your, like, you know, we can have that agreement between us. I won't go having a secret hearing that you don't know about before you are able to speak, but on the other hand, I can't wait like six months, but if if February or March, whatever.
Well, it's the other side too. We want to make sure that the BSA will consider our recommendation and that gets addressed and out.
They will, they will, but because I I guess I had another community board that kept telling me they didn't want to meet with me over and over and over again, but they had to, because they didn't get their thing together, but my hearing was coming up, and I really got to meet. No, make it six months out, and so that it needs to be somewhere with me, just being.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're interested.
That seemed like me either, so that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a naive question um that is more about curiosity and understanding. Uh, we're hearing a lot of talk about essentially, you know, we have the discrepancy between the owner and the tenant. And the owner is not necessarily a main character in some of the um actions that may be happening around sanitation or on parking or around interpersonal dynamics, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? So um the consequence of denial seems like it implicates the the threat of development. My question is, and again, I'm acknowledging my own naivete, um if not, like, if the and similarly not interested in creating, you know, family, small businesses over generations out of business, but outside of the the personal to understand the more systemic of how these things um unfold. If the owner is, if the owner's ability to continue to own there and be approved in this zoning is being threatened by their own tenant, is the only option development? Could it be a another tenant? And if even if it's not auto body mechanic, like artist studios or. So that's what you're asking they have, so it has to either be automotive or whatever, and why is that?
Okay, so or if 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 they are, if they are denied, then they could always reapply for anything. She could apply, you know, you could submit a new application for a new variant.
Just being totally.
Probably not, but.
The normal site, it's square.
But but art studio, maybe, who knows, right? So.
Right.
There are other options.
Like I'm just, I'm I'm putting myself in the mind of the actual owner and curious about like their options here.
I really think their options are operated as an automotive.
As this particular.
But it could be any other tenant.
Just automotive.
And why is it automotive again?
Because three nineteen sixteen, nineteen twenty seven.
That was the only thing that was.
That was approved. Yeah. Grandfather did, and it has to, it's a plan approval, it has to match the plans back.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that.
It's unfortunate, yeah, I understand it, it's.
Don't think it's kind of crazy.
So force standing, we have forces stand.
Right.
Okay, so how then, what would be the procedure for basically saying we would like the owner and the tenant to simultaneously come to us at the next monthly meeting or the month, whatever? For for the review and but just to be sure that the BSA is not going to close out the books on this before we have a chance to chime in.
That's basically what it would sound like. It would be like the recommendation was tabled pursuant to what you just said.
We're good at this.
Can I ask a question though?
Yeah.
What are we hoping to see from them come in that would make a difference and?
So I think.
Yeah.
They, since they know that what, because I'm not even sure if they know what the requirements are of them was, I don't know.
I think they do based on what was said that they have been, they have been giving you updates that they're.
The owner, and he checks on them regularly.
They've also been to police meetings in the evening. They've come to like, they they were at an N C O meeting before, so.
So for me, yeah, so for me personally, Ornella, um, this is a, I'm a trust but verified person. And so for me personally, the value add that I would hope to get out of this additional meeting would be, hey, he was the owner and then he was the tenant. We are sharing information with you that you should have been aware of, and in the event that you were saying you were not, here it is. We have received complaints. There are people in the neighborhood who also have complaints as well. We also understand there are people who are grateful for the service that you provide, and there is an agreement that had conditions that you were supposed to meet, and you have not met those. And so this is a way to take out the game of telephone, right?
And think of it this way, we usually when we have a public hearing on a on 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 a business, it's not the landlord that comes. It's the O C M applicant who's going to open up a license of cannabis dispensary. It's the, we don't do these, but could be the S L A applicant who's going to have a bar. So so meeting with the tenants in terms of how they're running their business in the community is certainly precedent.
So that would be the reason why, right? It would basically be that thing where it says, hey, we're in the community.
I I guess my question is, we're going to say that to them, and then what difference is that going to make in our, like, decision of how we move forward? Like, their response is going to make a difference in how we say, because it kind of seems, sounds like we're just reiterating to them, like, hey, this is the facts and now.
It might add a layer of accountability as the landlord has to show with the.
So the part to make sure that they're.
That's, yes, exactly that, yeah, it would be more.
Yeah, it's it's just, just like a sounding attablance, or like, who's going to be responsible for this and this? So when it comes time to like, you know, compliance, who would? Have we done this? Has this happened? Who was responsible for this?
And you were present at this board meet on this date.
And and everybody was aware of this.
Also demonstrates some of some effort to the residents who are those who are here, those who are not here, those who are not here, they're going to hear about it from those who are here, watching live stream or whatever that, you know.
And also give you a chance to rally your forces to uh the next meeting so that people can realize that this is going to be important.
Yeah, and tensions on the block are are palpable and that's also.
So it'd be important for us to see the others, you know.
Right.
Speak the other two, those, I mean, we can, but I'm just saying it's frustrating that it's like.
We can invite them.
These people.
My best to 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 ask for focused and very discreet. And by that, I mean focused on which body shop is being talked to about which car that's parked over here, and I have done that before.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's like, it's a, it's a.
I mean, I'm sorry, they're all bad. All problematic.
So just to, so just to tie a bow, yeah, so just to tie a bow on everything. So the recommendation is basically tabling a recommendation pursuant to having a follow-up conversation with the owner and the tenant. And then the outcome of that conversation, then there will be a recommendation that will come before the full board regarding two, four, seven, zero.
I I can even name a date that I think would be a workable date. So February third is a Monday. Um, which means that the chair would be available presumably. I don't know what you do in your real life. But I know in your community board life, you are available because Borough Board is the fourth.
Exactly, correct.
Also, it's the nominating committee, so I already have six, five members coming here to be here in person already, so that would help build our forum. Um, and that's a Monday, so.
All I have to say is that, yeah, is I, since I've been checking with a lot of people.
I know.
I'm going to go do that, I'm going to say February third, the evening, and I will get that.
The only other date that would be available that week would be the Thursday, the sixth. That's okay, so.
I go to so many meetings.
I have to say that that makes it. I have to say that, that makes it, you know, if, if we want to put the recommendation at the February meeting, that's February 10th. And so if there's going to be a recommendation.
They told us they were going.
So, so it really does leave us very little wiggle room unless we've been called like a, an emergency meeting.
But if it doesn't work out, I'm saying that I don't, we're not voting, even if the board, like I said, put us on in February, we met at the beginning of March, the board would not have voted yet.
Yes. Okay.
So if that doesn't work out, you can give me a date at the beginning of March as well. And no one wants.
So right now we have two tentative dates of February 3rd or February 6th. You will let us know.
See, they're February 3rd or, or, um, and we'll know hopefully, hopefully know by Monday. That can be that. Um, if it can't be February 3rd, then it will be punted into the month of March.
Yeah. I will start calling people tomorrow, but give me, yeah, call people for the tenants. There's a lot of them.
All right. And Patricia, you've got all of that because that's what to go on our February calendar, which is supposed to go out, um, it's probably next week.
Okay. So then is there anything else?
I'll see you again.
Okay. This is a public hearing at eight 21 P M. So folks, thank you so much for your patience.
You can say whatever you want, but it's no longer.
No, no, it's, it's just, it's just a question that, that I have because the issue of the other similar things.